Hi, everyone. Good evening and welcome to our student-led interview with Heidi Kater, who is running for the Wayzetta School Board. My name is Ankeeta Kumar and I'm here today with our student interviewers, Ruhan and Prisha. Together, we're a part of Wayzetta School Board Spotlight, a student initiative created to improve voter turnout, strengthen community education about the upcoming Wayzetta School Board election, and advocate for student representation on the school board in whatever means necessary. Here's how today's interview will work. Each student interviewer will ask a set of pre-written questions. The candidate will respond, and then the students will have a chance to engage in a short discussion. To keep things moving, each question, candidate response, and discussion will be limited to about three to five minutes total. I'll be keeping track of time, and I'll hold up a sign when there's one minute remaining. If we go over, I will step in and cut off the discussion so we can cover everything on the agenda. At the end, we'll close with questions submitted live by the community on Instagram and Facebook. Our goal is to create a conversation where students and the community can learn more about each candidate in a fair and engaging way. Thank you, Heidi Kater, for joining us today. Let's begin. So, Prisha will begin with our first set of questions on visions and priorities.
There. So, our first question is, what inspired you to run for Wayzetta School Board? And what perspective do you hope to add to the district decision-making?
Sure. Thank you for the question. First of all, thanks for having me tonight. I know this is coming very late in the season and I appreciate you all making time. I know this is a very, very busy time for students, so that's great that we get the opportunity to do this. Um, I, what inspired me to run for school board? So this time, I'm running for reelection. But if I look back four years ago, as to why I decided to run, it was, and I know we don't like to talk about it anymore because everybody's over it, but it was the middle of COVID. And I was just trying to get through, just like everybody was. And it was tough. I've got kids in schools. And it was tough to see how everything was changing and how, um, how it was really not controlled. Nobody knew what was coming. Um, and what I saw was a school board and a superintendent who were doing their darndest to make sure that we were making the right decisions. And I give mad props to Dr. Chase Anderson because if you go back and you watch some of those meetings, you will see how detailed and how much he really tried to figure out with data, how to make the right decisions for our students, okay? It's not easy because as somebody who is a public health professional, so I have a master's degree in public health, and, um, it, I could, I could see how difficult this was. For somebody who is in public health, we were all trying to figure it out, right? Nobody quite knew what was going on. We had never been through a global pandemic. Um, and so for somebody who doesn't have a background in public health, it's that much harder. So that's the reason that I ran. I decided that I had a set of skills from my public health background, which was a systems approach-based, uh, set of skills that could add something to the school board and the decision-making process. So even though somebody might not have all of the answers, the way that they think and approach problem-solving is really critical to having a good school board member. Now, I'm up for reelection, right? So the reason that I decided to run again, we're not in the middle of a global pandemic, but I still think my set of skills is very applicable to our school board and, and its needs right now. So you all know that we're going through a lot of transition and a lot of change. And I'm a very steady person. I'm very clear-minded, I'm very focused, I'm very calm. And I think that's going to be very important for the coming years in order to make sure that each one of you, each one of our students, has a steady experience.
Yeah. Good. Do you have something to say, Ankeeta? I think I cut you off.
Oh, no. I was just gonna say, um, I commend you a lot for taking that initiative. I think that was a very scary time for all of us, right? Like, not having any guidance. I think we were all in middle school when that was going on. And so, I feel like our school district definitely took a very balanced approach, you know, offering both the hybrid models and the, um, in-person models for those who are comfortable with it, and the full-distance model. So I think that that a different driven approach is really important, um, especially with the school district as large as ours.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too. And it seems like a very, like, relevant, um, background to have with all, like, the mental health discussions and everything that we've had with our previous candidates as well.
Yes.
Amazing. Well, I think Prisha can move on to the second question then.
Sure. If elected, what would be your top priorities for our district?
Um, there are, we've got some big things going on right now. So as you all know, uh, Dr. Chase Anderson is with us for just a few more months. And it has been eighteen wonderful years that this district has enjoyed his expertise and his leadership. Uh, and so having a new superintendent hiring and transitioning a new superintendent into our community, into our school, um, is going to be the absolute most important thing that we can do. We have to get this right. So that is number one. Um, I am also very much looking forward to the potential for a very big referendum that might be coming right around the corner. We have, you know, we've had meetings about the potential for that over the past few months, and it'll continue into November. So please look forward to, to watching the, um, the school board meetings for that. Um, that referendum could potentially bring us a new middle school, potentially a new elementary school. It could bring us all kinds of new updates. So whenever the district does a new building, the benefit is that all of our other buildings have the opportunity to get upgraded, to bring everybody up from an equitable, uh, an equitability standpoint. You want to bring all of the buildings up to a certain level, right? And so, I'm excited. There is the opportunity for every one of our schools to have a new kitchen, um, or to have a kitchen. Um, there's a new possibility for expanded cafeterias. There is new possibilities for new programming. And, and the way that this district does things for programming is really exciting, right? So all of our facility needs, so I'm the chair of the facilities and long-range planning committee. And the way that we approach things in the district is that all of, everything is driven by teaching and learning. So, facilities are driven by the needs that we have in teaching and learning. So if we, if we want new programming, if we want an, you know, I don't know, an aerospace program or more CTE programming around, um, CNA certifications, things like that, this is, this is our chance. So I'm very excited about that. And of course, alongside all of those adulting things, is the important work of our students that's happening. We have to make sure that everything is calm and steady so that your teachers can make sure that you have the most, um, excellent academic experience so that you're growing both academically and achieving academically, and that you're also personally growing. Okay, there are other things. There are other things. So those are kind of the, the big pieces that are happening with the district, right? And then there are things that I personally bring to the table that I think are very important. Um, one of them is, um, a continued push for comprehensive safety in our schools. So anybody who knows me knows that, um, the topic of school shootings and gun violence against children is really, really, um, close to my heart. And I think that we need to keep pushing to make sure that we have a comprehensive view. It's not just about, I believe, don't, don't get me wrong. I believe in, you know, all the right locks and all the security systems and all the cameras. All those things are important. And we have to take a more comprehensive view of things. So when we're talking about making sure that we have enough counselors in our buildings, and we're making sure that we have enough social workers in our buildings, and we're making sure that we have good family connections and that partnership between school and teachers, all of those things are preventative work. And unfortunately, when money is tight, my friends, preventative work is the first thing that gets cut. I'm in public health, and I know just how dangerous that is. Because the minute you start pulling the preventative work out, it's hard to gain that momentum again. And you lose a lot of headway that you've already made. And so, I will remain focused and committed to making sure that our schools are safe. And when I say safe, I mean body, mind, and spirit, right? So, so the whole envelope of the building is safe. Our teachers and staff are safe. Our students are safe emotionally and physically. Um, I got one minute left. Um, there's another piece that I think is very important. Um, we have been able to enjoy free and free meals over the past, I think it's two to three years. Um, and the funding might not be there for it. And so it's gonna be very, very important because food is not just food, right? It is, it's, it's a basic need that we all need to make sure that we're able to do the things that we need to do at school. Um, and so I have a keen eye and a good network to make sure that we are still able to have all of the basic needs that our students need.
Amazing. Well, let me ask Ruhan and Prisha this. Do you guys feel like your needs, your basic needs are being met, um, in the school district?
That's a great question.
Um, I would say so. And, um, especially like with the free meals and stuff, um, the meals used to be like three dollars, um, per like lunch meal. And now they're free. And I feel like a lot of my friends who are taking benefits of that and like actually having breakfast in the morning whenever they get laid or whatever. And, um, I think it has been a useful addition to our school recently.
I completely agree with the, um, free meals things because I also get breakfast in the morning now because of that. And I also know a lot of people who, you know, don't wanna worry about like always spending money on food, which is like a, like things we need for the day and can really focus more on other things. And especially about the breakfast part, I would have never eaten breakfast before if it was like extra money. And like middle school, I know, I never did that. But now I get to do that, and I think it helps me a lot in the morning because I don't always wake up, um, early enough to get, like, eat breakfast at home. So going to school and knowing that I'll be able to eat breakfast there and it's gonna be free is something that really helps me.
Can I ask you a question? Do you feel like, um, the, the, um, kind of the experience that you have in the cafeteria has changed at all because of free meals?
Um, I think that it's been more, um, especially for the breakfast in particular, much more people have gone, like, all my friends and me, we all going at breakfast. And during the school, I feel like there's been a lot more people getting à la carte now because, um, instead of putting the money in your account just to get regular lunch, you can go and get maybe a sweet treat if you want one. Or if you did really good on a test, you can get a cookie because your parents put like a few dollars in your account, and you can spend that throughout the year instead of having to do it only for lunch. And I feel like that's really changed.
Yeah.
Prisha, how about you?
Yeah, I think, um, a lot of people are like enjoying school lunch, um, more. And they're like trying all the different things. Otherwise, they would be like stuck to this one meal that they've tried before. Um, I would definitely go to something I've tried before, uh, instead of trying new things if I had to like pay for them every single time. And, yeah. And I've also like noticed like with breakfast, a lot of people, just like with free breakfast, they just like take like three things and they would like leave too often this little like basket. And I feel like, um, that kind of like shows, maybe we should add different like options for lunch. And I know that's not really something that we are in charge of, but, yeah, just a suggestion.
Yeah, that's great. Ankeeta, have you noticed any differences?
Yeah, I mean, I will echo what, um, Prisha and Ruhan said about just everyone kind of taking advantage of those free meal opportunities and expanding their, um, appetites. But kind of on top of that, going back to what you said earlier about the safety component, um, I think that it's something that a lot of students still express concerns over, especially when we do see a new school shooting in the news. Uh, I have taken a lot of like, you know, social studies classes at the high school, like AP government, um, AP US history and whatnot. And whenever those events happen, we do end up talking about it in class. And I think that it's not something we should be this scared of and this worried about at our age. And so it does mean a lot to hear that that is a priority for you because that's what our leaders should be prioritizing, in my opinion at least.
Yeah, yeah. I am very sorry that this is something that hasn't been fixed. And, um, I was in school when Columbine happened. And, um, you know, we should have figured this out. We really should have. And so, I'll keep at it, I'll keep at it. There are a lot of barriers, I will tell you. Um, and the other thing to remember is that gun violence is the number-one killer of kids under seventeen in the United States of America. I will say that every time I have a platform, platform, because I think it's really important for people. People don't understand how big of a problem this is. So when that's the number-one killer of our kids, our kids were allowing this to happen, we have an epidemic. And again, because of my public health background, I can tell you with certainty that when you have an epidemic, there's never one cause. It's not just one thing and you're gonna do it and it's done, right? There's no like poof magic wand. Um, and so we're gonna have to take a very, um, patchworked kind of approach because you've got a giant hole and you're gonna have to cover it a little bit here and a little bit here and a little bit here. And we may never be able to cure it, right? Some diseases never get cured. But we can definitely stop it from impacting our lives so heavily, just like any other disease. We can do this.
I appreciate the positive and forward-thinking mindset. With that, I think it would be a good idea to transition to our last question and Prisha's section, just for the sake of time.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. What do you see as the biggest challenge, um, biggest challenges facing Wayzetta schools right now? And how would you address them?
Um, well, are you thinking about this from like a student perspective? What is the biggest student issue that we're seeing? Or are you thinking about it from like a district level?
I think more like district level. Um, I would like what we're seeing as some of the bigger challenges that we're trying to like tackle down right now.
Yeah, yeah. So I think I'm gonna echo the, the big pieces that we've got, right? So, um, we have a new superintendent to hire and transition. That's gonna take quite a bit of energy and time. And it's not a problem per se, but it is definitely something that's going to take a lot of attention and care. Um, the referendum, because one of the issues that we do have is that we are running out of space. So it's a problem, but it's a great problem to have. Our district and our families are growing. Um, and so that's, but it's something that we do need to address. And so that's where the referendum comes in. Um, we also do have class sizes that have been bigger than they typically have been, right? Uh, and this change in class sizes needed to come again because of COVID and the funding losses that we had during that time. Um, class sizes, I will tell you, I'm very happy this year because our board was, we knew that we had to change our class size ratios. And that was one of the hardest decisions I ever had to make because I never thought in a million years I would be okay with a budget that increased class sizes. Um, so I will tell you, there are times when you are in a leadership role and there are some tough decisions that hurt you to your core. That was one of them for me. Um, we, as a board, have, since we made that decision, have made it a priority that we will get back to our previous ratios. And I'm very happy to say that this year we have made incredible headway, incredible headway in our class sizes because we had a solid fund balance. There are still some pockets that are high. I'm not gonna deny that. But we're getting there, and it takes inch by inch for us to be able to make it a stable thing again in our budget, and we're almost there. I will say one other issue that I think, um, is always top of mind. It has been for a while. And one of the reasons I decided to school board is because I know that there is a growing mistrust, um, in public institutions. And, um, I believe so heavily in public education. Public education is the basic foundation that our society is built on in the United States of America. It is critically important that every single person in our country have access to a solid education. And in Wayzetta, we have one of the best in the state, which makes it one of the best in the country. We are very fortunate and we lead. And so we have to make sure that we own up to that responsibility, right? Our district is really, really, really important to the health and well-being of public education. Uh, and so, I want to rebuild that trust. And I want to rebuild that, those, those community connections that are so necessary for a solid education for all of our students.
Amazing. Thank you for that in-depth response. Uh, I think we should probably transition to our second section for the sake of time, but we can definitely circle back and have more student feedback on your answer later on if there is time.
Sure.
So, Ruhan will lead our next section on student experience and equity.
The first, the first question I'm gonna ask is, how familiar are you with our district's current priorities, opportunities, and areas for continued growth?
I'm very well-versed. So we just updated, I was part of the board when we updated our strategic roadmap and, uh, the, our values. And so I'm very, very well aware of it. Um, our equity commitment goes hand in hand with that. And I am a firm believer that we need our equity commitment at every junction. Um, it's, it's really the how in what we're going to, in, in what we're doing. Um, and it makes sure that every single student gets what they need. It removes barriers to academic achievement. And it makes space for everybody, right? That's, that's what we need. Every single student needs to have space in our schools to be able to grow and thrive. Um, and so I'm a firm believer that, that we need to keep it going and we need to strengthen our efforts around it.
Amazing. I guess this would be a really cool, um, point to kind of ask our student interviewers. How familiar are you guys with the district's current priorities, opportunities, and areas for continued growth?
I would say I'm, I wasn't really that familiar before like joining Wayzetta School Board and like getting to hear from other candidates. And, um, I feel like it has been meaningful to kind of like know what our school and school board is prioritizing. And, yeah, it's just nice to hear from everyone.
I don't think that I'm very familiar with our district's like, um, policies. And I feel like, um, I haven't really seen like any like exposure towards it, um, really in like, maybe like school or online or anything. I feel like that maybe is one of the ways that I've not been able to like become well-versed with it. But it seems like it's really, really pressing towards like our everyday lives and it's something that's really important.
Um, I know that in the past couple of years, uh, Mr. Gengler, your principal, worked quite a bit with his staff to create something called the Portrait of a Student, of a Wayzetta student. And, um, I can tell you that that is something that is directly linked to our mission, vision, our values, our equity commitment, all of that, right? So our, our mission's here, and then you kind of step down into all of these different things. And the thing that really impacts you guys is that portrait of a Wayzetta graduate. And it's, it's what you should be focused on. And these are the experiences and the qualities that I should be striving for before I leave these four walls, right? And so, um, I do think you have some exposure to it, but it's at a different, it's what impacts you, right? So what impacts me as a board member is the mission and values, because I'm looking fifteen, twenty years ahead of me. You guys are looking, I've got four years. So this is what I need to do in four years. And so everybody's got their piece of, of what impacts them most. Have you found that the development of that portrait is helpful to you?
Um, I feel like it gives you a solid base of what, um, really teachers and the district is looking for from students. And it lets us know like what, um, attributes are very, very important. And I know that I've had a lot of exposure to it because in a bunch of my classes, we do assignments that really like say, how does this relate to the way it's graduated or Wayzetta student? And so many things that we do have direct relation towards that. And it's really, um, interesting to see how that they can act.
Great. That's so good to hear.
Yeah, I would just say that it's nice to have a visual for kind of, not what's expected of me necessarily, but something that I should have. Um, it is an expectation. But I would say rather than something else other people, other teachers want for me, it's something that I want more for myself now. Like it inspires students to kind of not only be told to have those characteristics, but strive for them themselves, create opportunities for, for themselves so they can develop those characteristics. And to really have all of that on one sheet of paper, on one poster, you kind of see what you should kind of leave your high school experience with and like what would benefit you going into college. And you can also see what areas you might lack if you kind of have all of those in one place. And you might realize that something is less developed than another thing. And that's something that you would wanna work on. I think it's a really good piece of self-reflection. And I do wish that we talked about it more in classes. Um, I know that there might be some protocol that they asked teachers to kind of introduce it, maybe in the first week of school. But I just know like a lot of my teachers didn't really end up doing that. And so if there was a way to kind of make that more engaging and more, more prominent, um, I think that would be really beneficial just because it has been something that I've been reflecting on, um, as soon as it was introduced, so.
Yeah, I think it's really powerful. Like you're saying, it's very powerful to have that kind of overall picture because we can all get kind of caught up in all the, all the little things that we're doing and registering for classes and trying to figure out what's next. And, but to have that full picture that you're always driving towards is so powerful. I'm glad you're finding, I'm glad you're finding use in it. That's really good.
Great. Yeah, thank you so much. All right, Ruhan, would you like to, um, announce the second question?
All right. How would you make sure students' voices are included in the school board decisions?
Yes, that's a great question. So, we, I, again, I'm a believer in, in all, you know, not just having one thing that you're, that you're, you know, that you're focused on. There are many different avenues and many different ways that people and students can have a voice with the school board. So, over the past years, when I was chair of the, um, uh, it's now called the Community Relations Committee, we had several times that we would come to the high school, for example. Um, bagels with the board, we'd have lunch with Fusion. Um, we were invited to several events, um, that had presentations from students. And it's not just in the, you know, because, for example, at, at the presentations, you're sitting and getting, right? You're sitting and you're watching a presentation or you're... But it's really in the engagement. For me, as a school board member, it's in the engagement that happens before the event and after the event that I find a lot of value. And it's where I make connections with students. It's where I hear from students. It's where I connect with teachers and administrators within the building to understand how these educational programs are impacting you in a positive or negative way. Um, and so I think the way that we have more student voice, and I am all for more student voice with us, is that we strengthen the pathways that we have. And we can change it, right? Like if bagels with the board is not working for us for whatever reason now and we need to shift it, let's shift it. You know what I mean? If we need to increase the times that the board comes into the high school and, and sits down and talks with students, let's do that. And I wanna make sure that we are not just targeting one or two groups. Because I think a lot of times, you know, student council is really the one who tends to have a connection with, um, school board. But I think we need to expand it. I think we need to figure out different groups and different, um, avenues for how we can hear different voices. Um, I also think it's really important to hear from middle schoolers and middle school teachers. And I think it's incredibly important to hear from our elementary students because in all honesty, I have, so I have an elementary student right now. And, um, he is very clear-minded. He is incredibly honest. And sometimes I get the best feedback from him. And so I don't want to, I don't wanna discount just because somebody is young doesn't mean that they don't have a very strong and important voice, um, for, for what we are doing.
Yeah, I mean, I would completely agree with that. I, I've also seen that little kids can provide very honest feedback. One of the best programs that I really appreciate the high school for setting up is the Child Psychology II class, uh, with the Trojan Talks. They have the whole day for, um, taking that class was amazing just because being able to interact with kids of that age, like four, five, six-year-olds, you just get to see the world through their like four, five, six-year-olds, you just get to see the world through their, through their eyes. And you know how much they cer, they value certain lessons, they don't value certain lessons. Like you're not gonna get that um, maybe as raw from the, the older kids. So I completely agree that like there has to be feedback in, in place from all levels, not just the high school level, uh, which we might be more prone to advocating for. Uh, in that sense, is there a certain like method that works better from getting that feedback? Just cuz it, it is hard for middle schoolers and elementary schoolers to maybe fill out a survey accurately or always um, the way that we are asking, you know, high schoolers to do that now.
Well, I think middle schoolers definitely like, I, I had him, I had two middle schoolers la, you know, two years ago. And so I know that middle schoolers can also get silly on surveys and not, because they get bored of all these different surveys, right? It's not the best way. Um, I think there are some really cool ways of gathering information. So um, in, you know, I uh, taught public health for many years at some local colleges in the graduate programs. And so because of that, I have, I'm privy to a lot of different research methods that come with doing different kinds of research and, and trying to gather information from um, people of different abilities. And um, somebody who might not be prone to writing something up or coming to speak in front of others. It's just, you know, a, as a person who's just living their life, right? There's, there's not always somebody who wants to show up to a meeting and speak, for example. And so one of those ways is called photo voice. And photo voice is a super cool research method where you ask certain questions. And then people go off and take pictures of what helps them to answer that question. And then you take the picture and you bring them into like a focus group, essentially, and you talk about it. And you have a conversation around it. And it really becomes this um, community-building method that um, that you have a conversation piece to start with. And it, it allows people to really think deeply about how they're answering that question and what these questions mean to them. And um, what kind of information they wanna relay back to whoever's collecting that information. So there's, there are a bazillion other things that I could come up with, but because of time. Um, but that's just one of them. You know, there's, and, and a, and an elementary school student can definitely take fabulous pictures with their parents' iPhone or with their little gadget watch or whatever it is. And that can be shared as well.
Amazing. I have so many thoughts about that. I think in and of itself, that could be just so much more accessible, especially for those younger kids.
Absolutely. And even for, even for high schoolers, because it feels less cumbersome, right? It's just something that you're, you're able to do in short term. You can snap it and move on with your life and then come back to it later when you're ready.
Of course. I think that is somewhat of a good transition to our last question in Ruhan's section.
The last question is what steps would you like to take to improve mental health support and well-being for students?
Um, this has been front of mind um, for a long time. So um, again, I'm gonna say the C-word. Covid uh, definitely escalated uh, our mental health crisis in, in this country and, and in our state. But it was always there, right? Um, it's just that Covid was an impetus for us to see it as, as widely as we are seeing it. Uh, and I think also the lack of um, caregivers that were available during that time also kind of heightened the issue. Um, this is our first year to have a counselor in every single one of our buildings. That's a huge deal. It's a huge deal. And I will tell you that that funding also, right after we hired, got cut. And so um, one of the things that we will need to grapple with and need to figure out is how we maintain that level of service for our students and our staff. Um, because I think, I think having somebody whose sole focus is on mental health and how to reach students and how to see our students and see our staff. And to be able to make those connections early on, again, it comes down to all the preventative pieces that really make a long-term difference. We have to think about it in the long term. And so I think that's a huge investment. Um, I'm not sure how we're gonna make it happen, but I think it's really critical that we do continue to make that happen. And there are many steps to that, right? There's, there's advocating at the, at the legislature, there's working with our representatives hand in hand. Like I just had a meeting earlier this week, I believe it was this week, um, with one of our representatives on how to create a more comprehensive look at safety. And, and how do we decrease class sizes? And where do we find pots of money for that to make that happen? Um, so there are some really practical ways that as a board member, I can take that on. Um, and I need a good superintendent. So Dr. Anderson has been an incredible ally in all of that. And um, he goes down to the Capitol with us every single year, multiple times during the year to advocate. He is um, he's an incredible person when it comes to even building those relationships just one-on-one with our representatives, anybody who's an elected official. Um, and I think we need to, you know, having a superintendent who's willing to maintain that um, in our state and local governments is really, really critical for the well-being of our schools. And then, you know, obviously the well-being of our students.
Amazing. Thank you for such an in-depth response. I think we would have to transition to our last section on community and governance. So you have mentioned a lot of your professional experiences. What are some personal experiences that prepare you to contribute to guiding our district's future if you were to be re-elected?
There's a lot in my personal background. So I will tell you that um, my parents are immigrants. So I'm in, I'm Middle Eastern, we're from Egypt. And um, I grew up in a way where my household was still Egypt, even though it was plopped right in the middle of Plymouth, Minnesota. So you'd walk into the doors and it smelled like Egypt and it felt like Egypt and it sounded like Egypt. That was how I grew up. And then I would leave those doors. And it was not Egypt anymore, right? And so just even having that experience growing up, I think has allowed me to be extraordinarily open-minded. And um, being in a role of governance means that you have to listen a lot in order to really hear people's voices. And sometimes people don't say everything that they're trying to say. But being the listener, you have to, you have to pull it out and you have to tease it out and understand it. So good listening is really at the core of this job. Um, I have become a good listener because I have had to adjust and learn and be a part of American society. And um, and so that's, that's really at my core is learning and leaning in and understanding different perspectives. And knowing how to live the way that I wanna live and live side by side with somebody who doesn't live the same way as me or doesn't have the same values. But we can still be great neighbors, you know? And so I think that's a perspective that's really important to school boarding is how do we make this whole system, this really big system with a lot of different people? How do we make it work for every single person and make it comfortable? We're all gonna have to make some slight concessions so that we can all share in this space together. And so I think I'm, I'm really well-equipped for that. Um, I have spent many, many years doing volunteer work. Um, and in, and that means community building and community engagement. And um, you know, dealing with many different types of people for a common goal. And again, you know, it's twenty-two years of that, right? So, so it's, it's really deep and inside my core. And the way that I grew up was that um, community work was just a part of how we do in my family. Um, and so there's a big responsibility, there's a big ownership for it. And um, I'm, I'm excited to continue leading.
Amazing. Ruhan Aprija, do you have any other kind of similar experiences um, either relating to your ethnic cultural background, um, feeling that kind of difference from where you grew up versus where you might be from?
Um, I was born and grew up here, but my family and everyone um, like, or my extended family, it ha, um, grew up in India and were from India. And we, and my parents immigrated like right when I was born. So it's definitely been like my household very, you know, like different than culturally than um, school or something. And sometimes it does get hard to adopt, they adapted to cultures. But really, the, like, learning how to do that is a major, like, it's a really good skill that you learn. And I feel like it's helped me with so many different things. Mm-hmm, and I share that experience with you. So I think that's really great.
Makes us stronger, I tell you that.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I have like moved from India to Minnesota and then gone back and come back. And it, it has been an entire like journey. And I got to be part of WISZETI schools both times, so really glad about that. Um, other than that, I think it does really like shape how you like, like just do school. Um, or like how you make friends and everything. And I feel like it, it really like gives you that outside peace that it's kind of like hard to connect with what you're experiencing in school. Like your parents have a totally different experience with school and especially with colleges now, they have had um, gone to college like thirty years ago, you're going now, and it's all, all different. But yeah, it's really nice to see like how like it has shifted or how it's still the same and how it connects together. Yeah.
It is an incredible experience to be a second-generation um, immigrant, right? And um, I think one of the things that I would teach quite a bit about, I, I taught a class on um, immigrant and refugee health. And um, one of the things that I think is really important to remember, and I'm, I'm talking to you as a second-generationers, just like me, is that the immigrant experience doesn't end with just our parents. It continues on for generations. And um, don't ever, don't ever take that for granted. There are real benefits to it. There are some hard things and challenges that go along with it, but it's, it's our experience, like we own that and that makes us who we are. And um, that's what the United States is, right? We're, we're a country of immigrants and that's what makes it beautiful.
Amazing. I'm really glad that that was a point of connection for all of us.
Same here.
For our second question, how would you keep parents, students, staff informed and engaged in board decisions?
Well, that's a big one. We try so hard to communicate things out, but there is so much to communicate. And um, I think one of the things that has come up is our communications department has created um, a podcast. And I think that's super wonderful. I think people are really responding well to it. Uh, I think it humanizes our administrators and our um, culinary staff and our nurses. And I think it's really important that we all see each other as humans. Because I, sometimes when you just hear about a decision in an email and you don't connect it to the why and the who and all of that, it kind of takes away from, from the importance of it in our lives. And so connecting on a human level is really important. I think that podcast is incredibly powerful and I think it will help to rebuild some of that trust between our school community and um, our, our public school system. Uh, I honestly think that we need to engage students on this. You all know how to, how to get information across. We're getting a little old and rusty. And I think there are some great ways and things that you can offer us in quick ways to communicate information. But that's accurate too. So that's one of the things that I struggle with quite a bit. If you look at my website, I have a Q and A section. And I know my answers are just so long and drawn out, but the detail is important. And how do you find that balance between getting the message across without it being a soundbite? Because a lot of these decisions and the work that happens um, is way bigger than just a soundbite. And it would be, it would be wrong to not give, you know, the, the full context around it. So I would say if you all have ideas, and I would love to hear them from you if we have time right now, um, what you think would be an engaging way to get our information to you?
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, I don't think we do have the time right now. Yes, no, this, this would be an amazing conversation to have. And I know that I think so many students, especially those interested in like graphic design, public relations, communication, like so many students are so engaged with extracurriculars in the high school where they are already doing that, like taking pages and pages of information, like from something that, you know, they had to read as like a club officer and turning it into something engaging for their members. Things like that can all, like be applied on a school district level, uh, given that there is so much out there. And I know that students would jump at the opportunity to provide that feedback.
Yeah.
But for now, let's transition to our, not right now. Let's transition to our last question in the section. If tough decisions come up where the community is divided, how would you approach it?
Uh, I, I rely on listening. Um, and I think there have to be avenues to hear people and listen to them. So we have always had tough decisions in our district. Whether it was deciding to go from a junior high model to a middle school model, whether it was to do the block schedule or not, whether it was to change boundaries or start times, these are all really big decisions that impact our community, our families, our students heavily. Um, and so it's important to take the time to gather feedback, to hear the feedback, to modify, um, take it back to our community, make sure that the modifications make sense. And kind of do that in an iterative process to a limit, right? Because there's only so many times and so many things you can change. Um, but to have that back and forth engagement, I think is incredibly important. Um, and again, just spending the time listening and, and really teasing out what the, what the values are, right? So as a school board member, I don't get into the nitty-gritty. There's a difference between governance and management. And I have to stay focused on the values piece of it. And it's sometimes hard, it's really hard to stay at that higher level sometimes because we all wanna get into the nitty-gritty. But we all have to stick to our roles because each one of them is critical. And so if, if I don't do my governance bit right and, and figure out what the values and the vision are, nothing else is going to work. Everybody, everybody's relying on that to get done perfectly correctly so that we have a clear vision and a clear purpose on what we're striving for.
Amazing. Thank you for that response. That brings us to our final few minutes. For our closing, we'll take a, we'll take questions submitted directly from the community who are watching us live on Instagram and Facebook. Let's start with our first question. All right. If you could teach any class at the high school, what class would it be and why?
Oh, my gosh. I love to teach. So I think, did I mention, I mentioned, I think just now, that I used to teach at um, I was an adjunct professor at a couple universities locally. Um, and the only reason I'm not teaching is because my programs got cut, their public health. And so, you know, there's some stuff, there's some stuff, but it's okay, we're working it through and positive thinking. Um, but I, I honestly would start a public health um, class. I think that high schoolers are more than ready to start learning the foundations of public health. And I would love to, I would like, I would do this tomorrow. If somebody, if Scott Gangler wrote me and said, Heidi, we're starting a public health class, I would teach it for free.
All right. Our second and final question asked by the audience members who are watching is what has been your favorite campaigning memory?
Oh, man, there's so many. There's so, so many. So I remember one. Um, when I was door-knocking, it was the first, it was kind of the first couple times I went door-knocking. And um, I knocked on somebody's door and his son opened the door and I gave him a flyer and it was, that was kind of it, right? And then I was walking down the street to the next, to the next household and I saw, and my husband is always in the car kind of lurking next to me to make sure, cuz you know, door-knocking can be a little shady sometimes. And so um, he's kind of driving down the road and I see somebody like running behind me and it's like, wait, wait, wait. And so my husband puts the car, and it's like a big suburban, okay? So he puts the car in reverse and he like comes shooting back cuz he sees this person running towards me. And he's like, did you just knock on my door? And I was like, yes, I knocked on your door. Is that okay? I'm sorry, I'm running. I was like, you know, I'm not a solicitor, I'm just, I was just door-knocking as part of my campaign. And he said to me, I haven't had somebody knock on my door. And he said to me, I haven't had somebody knock on my door since Paul Wellstone. And oh my gosh, like for somebody to say that to me, it was just. Yeah, that was, I, I think that was my favorite memory. Um, my other favorite memory, sorry, I got a little emotional. Um, my other favorite memory is walking in the League of Women Voters. Um, I'm sorry, not with the League of Women Voters, I, I also walk with them separate from my campaign, so we should cut that piece, but.
Yeah.
Um, uh, when I was walking in the parade uh for the, when Plymouth used to have a parade, um I took my kids and a bunch of friends and we were walking in the parade. And my son was just melting down, he was like five, four, five years old at the time and just melting down and not having it. And um I remember somebody just hollering from the crowd, it's all right, mom, we all go through it. And I just remember feeling like, you know what? We are just all in it together and it's fine and everybody sees he's having a meltdown and it's okay because this is my home. And these are my people and this is my community and it is just fine. And I come just the way I am and I am accepted exactly the way I am. Messy sometimes, loud sometimes, extra sometimes, just exactly how I am.
Oh, that was beautiful. Thank you for joining us today and thank you to our student interviewers and all the community members who may have tuned live. On behalf of Wazetta School Board Spotlight, we appreciate your time and your willingness to engage directly with students. Our goal is to make this election as accessible and meaningful to the whole community as possible. And conversations like this are an important part of that work. Please look forward to our future candidate interviews and fill out our pledge to engage form linked in our Instagram bio to stay connected and involved in this election. Thank you again.
Get out the vote.